Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our annual budget meeting. First, I'd like to welcome my fellow board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As well as our town managers from Crabtree.
Good evening.
And Meredith Ahkler and our treasurer, collector, finance director, Wendy Hatch.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for putting together all these materials for us by the February 15th due date. We're going to start with a review of the summary letter like we always do that the town manager provided us on February 15th. Next, we will ask Wendy, our finance director, treasurer, collector, to review our source of use of funds document with the board as you always do. And then we'll go through each of the individual department budgets in our packet where board members will ask specific questions. Then when we finish our review, we'll vote on a budget and send it to the finance committee with our recommendations. Per the charter under fiscal affairs on page 18, Article 2, Section 35 in the annual budget, it says, "The selectmen shall consider the tentative budget submitted by the town manager makes its recommendations relative thereto as they deem expedient and proper in the interest of the town. On or before the first day of March of each year, the selectmen shall transmit a copy of the budget together with their recommendations relative thereto to each member of the finance committee." And that's what we'll be doing right after this meeting. And I would ask that town manager and Wendy this evening if you could just, as you're going through and reviewing with the board, to talk about any significant changes in salaries, identify any new positions, identify any open positions and progress on filling those positions, and to highlight any other significant change from last year in the operating expenses. And with that said, Mr. Town Manager.
Good evening. So as we usually do, just for the, obviously, the residents and the public that's watching it, there's a letter that they, you know, that's online or will be online after this evening, the budget will put up as we usually do with your recommendation. But I'm going to read that, and it'll be a little bit long, but I think it's good for people that are watching at home or listening, that they can get the context of the letter. So I'll do that now. And this is a letter that's transmitted to the board of selectmen from myself, and it's the preliminary operating budget estimate for fiscal year 2026. And they want to just highlight that, you know, these are estimates and they change. This is a work in progress that happens over the next few months into May and June where things change and as we get more information and have our hearings at the Finance Committee. So I am transmitting to you under Article 2, Section 34, the Town of Saguas Charter, Proposed Estimated Expenditure and Revenue Budget for the Town of Saguas for Fiscal Year 2026. Total estimated expenditure budget is $119 million and change for the general fund and $15 million for Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. For the total fiscal year 2026, estimated expenditures of $134 million and change. This preliminary estimate of expenditures and revenues has been prepared based on the fiscal year 2025 local aid estimates. As you know, the final recommendations will not be available from legislators until much later in the budget cycle, at which time we'll have to revisit our revenue and expenditure estimates. The governor will likely not finalize the upcoming fiscal year budget estimates until the fall, as is usually the practice. The estimates of the fiscal year 2026 tax revenue have been calculated based on Proposition 2 and 1/2 increases on the tax levy as well as estimates of new growth provided by the deputy assessor. The local receipts such as motor vehicle excise, local room and meals excised, license and permits, fines, et cetera, continue to be estimated conservatively. We'll be reviewing the estimates as we go further through the current fiscal year. And again, you know, there's obviously proposed budgets that are put together by the governor, and that changes through the House and the Senate Committee and all that until it's finalized. So we obviously try to anticipate where we think it's going to end up and make those estimates. We try to be conservative because I think, you know, people probably forget, but years ago, and they think a while you've been around, we don't want to go to town meeting. We stopped that when we took over by making a budget that's out of, you know, one, structurally deficits and not estimated correctly. So then you're actually making cuts through the town meeting process, and then even after, if you run into a problem, you have to make cuts in the middle of the year. We just don't do it that way. I think we've done pretty good prudent financial stuff, and that's been recognized in our bond rating and our ratings for maintaining a double A plus bond rating. There are challenges in preparing the estimates of expenditures of this budget, such as townwide fixed cost increases. So health insurance, the rates have not been finalized by the provider. Town can expect that the rate will be set within the next few months. We have made a conservative estimate based on the current enrollment. We will have to revisit our estimates later in the budget cycle. And a lot of these are the same as last year. Trash hauling and incineration rates continue to increase. We expect significant increases in the hauling costs for the next fiscal year as the existing contracts will be ending. The incineration contract tipping fees is increasing in the upcoming fiscal year as well.
Scott, on that page, just a comment before it goes online.
Yeah.
In the third paragraph that says the preliminary estimate.
Yeah.
Has been prepared based on fiscal year 25 locally. Shouldn't that be 26 locally?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we get it right.
Thank you.
Online.
In addition, the cost of disposal of recycled materials continue to increase and have been impacted with contamination charges. We will continue to monitor the budget for any fluctuations in tonnage, and we'll consider making adjustments later in the budget cycle. So I think everybody realized we had a pretty good contract with the hauling. That's, we exercised all the options. I had negotiated that a while back before it was purchased and acquired. So that's going to be a significant increase coming up, and we're going to be looking at trying to maybe do something else. But again, this is one of those things that is 100% burden in bond costs by the town. Most other communities have a trash fee. We don't have any trash fee or anything here in Saguas. So whatever that increases, it's 100% to the town and affects the operating budget. So that's going to change in the tipping fees as well. It's going to have significant increase because that contract is up as well. And we'll see those impacts in at least half of fiscal year this year. Pension contributions, the pension appropriation for FY '26 to the amount of $5.7 million. This is an increase from the amount appropriated in FY '25 as shown in the most recent funding schedules prepared by PARAC and voted by the Saguas Contributory Retirement Board. This funding schedule is based on the actuary valuation completed January 2023 and reflects a 4.2% increase in fiscal year '26 through '28, with the final amortization payment being made in fiscal year 2028 to fully fund the pension obligation. This is one, this is one year long, and then there was previously funding schedule that reflected the final amortization payment being made in FY '27. Through public discussion with public officials, we have advised the recommendations of town's financial advisors and advised through recommendation, or should we word that, through the town's financial advisors and bond rating agencies that as funds become available from the changes in the pension funding schedule, funds will be appropriated to the OPEB trust. This will reduce the amount of the unfunded liability associated with these benefits, including on the financial statements, which is a significant contributor to maintaining our double A plus bond rating. And, you know, we've talked about sort of what we look at trying to do that, and we created a trust a while back, and I always try to talk about this every year so that people know that this is a public thing. There's some communities still aren't even dealing with it, and it's a significant effect. Those are, these are the things that are outlined with the bond rating all the time. It's the pension, the OPEB.
Question on the health insurance, right? So I noticed the budget went to just under $20 million, $19,785,000, up 11.3% from this current year's budget of 17.7? How much of that is rate versus growth of headcount?
It's rate.
It's all rate.
Yeah, so they're expecting everywhere in the whole state, they're expecting. And it's funny because...
So 11 points, we're budgeting an 11.3% increase assuming flat FTEs, not any new hires?
Correct.
Wow.
I would imagine our bond rate is not going to increase because of health insurance and pension obligations?
One of the bigger things, no, I think the pension is almost paying off. So they're actually, we're in really good shape. The issue has to do with social economics stuff. In other words, we only generate a certain amount. We have a low average tax bill, and that is a big contributor. I love, you know, how they look at that, and then they look at, you know, other factors. But that was a pension thing. We've actually chipped off. The OPEB is another one, and we've done a great job. And we've had tremendous new growth that's helped sustain, have recurring revenue. So we're really in good shape.
I'm a little concerned, though, from a budgetary standpoint, that we're not even budgeting any growth in headcount on the health insurance.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, I think that...
I mean, even if you fill positions, right?
Yeah.
Because you're not budgeting, unfilled positions aren't included in there, right, Wendy? It's only based on actual usage right now.
Right, it's based on, it's based on the enrollment.
Actual enrollment.
So I think we have...
So even if we fund some of those...
But we have enough room, I think, that we're...
You do?
Yeah, to handle whatever, significant, you know, like anything that's not significant. A lot of times, the school is what we have to worry about because we don't really have control of that, and then they just, they link to the thing.
I mean, we have almost $30 million committed between pension, health insurance, and other expenses.
Big time.
$30 million bucks.
Yeah.
And our levy's only 80-something million.
Right, correct. Yeah, the health insurance is funny because they gave us money back, millions of dollars during the pandemic, and we were like, Tom, we don't want the money. Just keep it and keep the rate slow because within a few years, they're going to want the money back.
They'll be choosing.
They're going to come back. Well, they want, yeah, it's just like, they want, they're going to come back and get the money later, so just keep it. But we did, I mean, we did create a trust, a targeted fund or whatever that we could, you know, at some point if we needed it. But I think right now we're okay, and maybe even think about putting a little more money in there for later on.
That would be for an emergency use, right, Scott?
Not necessarily. I mean, if you wanted to offset certain years that they, you know, the health insurance was like pretty stable for a while, like 4%, 5%, and then now, and then, but years before, it was high, like 9%. Now we're, it's telling us to look for a bigger impact, and we've looked at things, I mean, it's across the board, everywhere. It's having the same, same things, you know what I mean?
Wow. You know, when I saw the just over $2 million increase, as Jeff talked about, the 11.3% increase, that's the same exact increase that I got on my health insurance.
Yeah.
And I'm like, oh, well, that, typically, I would say, wow, that looks high, but I know what I'm paying, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it, everything, it's like, I think, honestly, the, and you can look at the budget, the tipping fees and the hauling is going to be pretty significant. That's going to be an impact of 100% on the town.
That, that's over 89% increase. That's almost double. That's incredible. Is there, can we negotiate with somebody else?
Not really, not really. I mean, we can, we have tried, but it's not, it's all, it's, we, the thing I, luckily, I guess, and beneficially to the town, I had negotiated at least a hauling years ago and went three years onto it after the three years. So we have options, and we've exercised all those options, and, you know, we've come to the end. I mean, they're pretty good pricing. And now it's...
Yeah, good burden.
Yeah, so we've saved a lot of money, and, you know, so now it's, you're sort of, every community has the same cost. So it's not like, you know, there's just somewhere to shop around. It's the same, the same thing with the health insurance is really not, you know, it's, the increases are the increases everywhere, and just like if you go to buy eggs or milk, everything is increased. So it's just a part of doing business, and you try to get the best deal you can, but it's, there's no, you know, no grants, there's no, you know, renegotiating things. It's, you know, there's a certain core cost you're going to, we have to bear, and those are the type of things that we're paying, like the hauling and the trash, we're paying 100% of it. So it's not like it's, you know, shared with any of the residents.
What's a tipping fee now?
I think it's about, what, about 80? I think, I think it's going to 82 or something like that. So the tonnage is pretty consistent.
Yeah.
Nothing's really jumped. It's just the thing, I mean, we have a thing where we don't pay, we, no one, you know, we pay, no one can pay less than us.
Yeah.
But still, everybody's paying, and it's costly, you know, so.
Well, it's funny, last year you did talk about the deal that you had with Robert Challing, but I didn't realize that, you know, it went up a million six. I didn't realize, you said you had, we got a deal that was that good of a deal.
Yeah, oh, real good deal.
Yeah.
Well, the, that's why, I mean, I don't want to get too much, but that's, I think, why we've had issues leading up, you know, where people, you know, delays and all that stuff. So then we had to sort of, I had to get, you know, had to send some letters and stuff from our legal counsel and try to make sure that we were on the same page, and I think everything's been phenomenal since. I think they've done a good job since last June.
Yeah, I really haven't heard a lot of complaints. We were hearing rapid fire.
Well, I think they're not making money here. They lose money, so they wanted us to just say, okay, we're going to go somewhere else, and, you know, so that's part of the, you know, they want you to, you know, they wanted us to break up, I guess, and thing, but I think we gotta just work it out now and stuff. We'll see. But that's just, you know, just so we know. Regional school assessment, vocational education, we talked about this, and we talked about it a lot, inclusive of the Northeast Regional Vocational Technical School, and Essex North Shore Tech is budgeted at $2.8 million based on estimate numbers provided by DESI on the minimum required contribution. As you know, enrollment information, which can be, it can, can have an impact on our assessment, is not confirmed by the, by DESI until April 2025. In October 2025, we will receive final enrollment numbers from Essex North Tech regarding the number of Saguas students they have accepted in their school. Northeast Regional Vocational School will have their budget voted by the school committee in March of 2025 and determine our assessment at that time. Adjustments may be required to be made accordingly. The fiscal 2026 estimated assessments reflect a 5% increase on the actual FY '25 assessment. Now, that's just what they're budgeting. The construction of the new Northeast Regional School is well underway. This is the Massachusetts School Building Authority approved construction project in the amount of $3.24 million. I thought it was 3.3, uh, 3.25.
3.25 million.
Based on the most recent debt information provided by Northeast Regional, our share of the existing debt service for FY '26 is going to be 700 and basically $800,000, an increase of $290,000 from fiscal '25. This amount has been included in the vocational education assessment budget in addition to the debt service for the construction of the facility, impacting the amount appropriated for vocational education and operational budget for a new school. A new facility with new systems and services will also impact our annual assessment for the vocational education operational budget as well as impact funding to the local district. As you know, the amount of debt service will be assessed to communities in the district for the construction project in a fluid number based on enrollment. Now, enrollment changes each year, so you can mount, we are required to pay. As of the school administration issues, the third round of debt service in May, the capital assessment will increase, continuing to put strain on our general funding operating budget under the constraints of Proposition 2 and 1/2, the board of selectmen are aware and have had public discussions with town meeting in the community when this vote was passed at the district election about the need to fund the vocational capital assessment through a debt exclusion override of Proposition 2 and 1/2. In the absence of an alternative source of funding, the capital assessment will continue to have a significant impact on the funding for local school district and our own local school district and continuing to us to deliver services to our residents. So we've talked about that at like the Satna increase. I think you asked about it at one of the other meetings. So we're, you know, $800,000 is pretty significant, and we have this crazy enrollment where it's usually 200, you know, 196. We're down to, I think, 117, and I don't know if that's going to change, but that's not great in the sense of having school options for kids that have, if you have kids here or grandkids, you should be able to get as many kids as we can, or we were getting in there before, and we just don't have that, although it's an increased cost. But it is one of, a public school, and it's a, I think, a great option, a great school. So I think that's a whole nother concern regarding that, but...
That has nothing to do with the cost for the school, though, right?
Yeah, it does.
Well, true, yeah, it does a little bit. So our cost to the school is less because we have less students. But if our thing increases, then our funding will change. So it's strange that, you know, we're...
And when the new school...
But the construction cost is consistent no matter what.
No, our allocation of the construction cost will be based on that.
Sure.
Because that's how they allocate the debt service payments each year.
And that is a concern.
Which is a kind of stupid...
Correct.
You know, it's a...
So every year, if we got like 100 more kids in there for some reason in three years, our payment would double, you know what I mean? And it's, you know, so...
So we got two, we have two risks. Right now, the first risk is that our enrollments are automatic, already artificially lower than usual.
Correct.
And then the second risk is when the school opens.
The operating budget.
The operating, operating budget, but also their capacity goes out.
Correct.
So their student enrollment for Saguas will probably go up as well, which will hit us twice.
Correct.
Are they switching to 100% lottery now?
I don't know. I thought they passed some kind of statute, but I don't know if it ever got implemented. But I think it was supposed to, I mean, you know, and in fairness, they're looking at, which is obviously a correlation to kids that do well. If you have a good absentee, you know, you have a good attendance record, and you have no discipline on your thing. It's usually a correlation, I think, of the kids that are doing well at Saguas, and then they, and the thing that's, it's eye-opening now is, I think, and I thought it was a lot less, I think I said this last year, but I think over 85% of the kids at the vocational school going on to college, you know what I mean, like a full year college. So it's a different, they're like, you know, it's like, that was a vocational by definition is that you're learning skills to go into the workforce. So it's not like just the plumbing and electrical, you know, HVAC.
No, now they're competing with the high school.
Business, I mean, you know, people going on to, you know, everything. I mean, it's, you know, architecture engineers. So I don't know if that's the best thing formula for the, for the local districts because they're pulling kids that are sort of cream of the crop, and if they're performing well academically and learning some sort of a skill that's going to help them in college, it may be a better way of learning and skill-wise, and they, and they're succeeding in college.
So, and the other outside risk we had before was that Catholic schools were being selective, and they would take the best athletes, right?
Yeah.
And now they're taking the best athletes and offering huge scholarships to reduce, to reduce the cost to the parents, the families. So we're, now we're, now we're at odds, we're, we're competing with the Volk School, we're competing with Essex Tech.
Charter.
And the charter and all of the Catholic schools.
And most of them are performing well academically.
People say, I ain't spending $15,000. Yeah, send my kid to Catholic school. Well, now they cut that number significantly down.
Correct.
It changes. And we lost, even when my son was a senior, like, we lost a lot of...
And those are the leaders, those are leaders within the school, too, like, that people look up to as role models and the cream of the crop, so to speak, that, I mean, you know, like, you sort of look at, and so I don't know. I mean, I don't know how they're going to result, you know, like, from a larger issue, it's definitely a problem, the schooling thing. Because these other schools are performing well academically, charter, the Volk.
Yeah.
You know, comparative to local districts. So I don't, you know, if the people feel like they need another opportunity to go somewhere with their kids.
I think, Scott, I know it's been a really long time, but do you know how long we've had Proposition 2 and 1/2? I mean, US...
Ed Collins was with the, Ed Collins...
I think he was 82, 83.
82, 83.
Ed Collins, I think, was one of the architects of it when he was in the Department of Labor.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, he was a deputy commissioner back then, right?
It was Bobby Anderson from Marblehead that spearheaded the ballot, and then, you know...
Yeah, so it's interesting. But it's funny because now you bring it up, I mean, we could talk offline, but other states don't have, don't have, like, you go to New Jersey, and they're like, they have, they're trying to implement other things like 10 years ago because the property taxes went off the roof. Every time it's an issue, they just raise the product, there was no restriction. Mass is like sort of ahead of their times in trying to get control of, you know, spending, and that's one way to get control because you now have to have local voters decide whether they want to increase, you know...
On something.
Yeah, yeah, on a, on a project for operating override or a, or a debt exclusion. So, but other states didn't have that for a long time, you know what I mean?
And it's good in that. Could be a double-edged sword.
Well, look, you go to, yeah.
You're in, the last four years, we've been in double-digit inflation for a big chunk of that time, and you're raising taxes 2 and 1/2%, which is still crippling.
Correct.
To a lot of families that are hurting, and...
You know, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2% of 10,000 is not the same as 5,000.
That's right.
So your property taxes increase.
Yep.
2 and 1/2%, it's bigger and bigger.
It does, you know, and then people are sitting there going, you know, you know, what am I going to do? But they don't understand. The costs around the town are more than 2 and 1/2%.
Other states are...
People think you just got a magic wand, and the money just appears somewhere.
There's no perfect thing. I mean, you look at some of these pension systems in other states, they're like folding. Like, when they implemented mandates that you have to fund it, so they've gotten back on track here, whereas other places like Georgia, bankrupt, they're folding. I mean, they have all different, they go to California, they get like a, if you saw you have a house worth more than $10 million, they have a 5% seller's tax on it. It's unbelievable, you know what I mean? And if it's over a million, it's like a 3%.
There's some neighboring communities, I won't say it on the public media, but I shared them on my face, on my selectmen's page, neighboring communities more affluent than Saguas, not the cities, towns. One's a city, but it's more affluent than us, that are in severe financial trouble.
Yes.
Severe.
Yeah.
One's on the DOR watch list.
I know that, yeah.
The other one already had two failed overrides. One of them, you'd be shocked. Like, they're much more affluent than us, and they're, they're, right now, they've jeopardized their bond rating.
Correct.
That's huge, like, these are communities that people would think like, oh, Saguas could definitely be bad.
Some of these other ones that settle teacher contracts are now, there's a whole other issue going on because they can't, they can't fund them unless they get an override.
Paying them off, aren't they?
They, they have to. Right now, they issued, one, one community issued 38 flips because the override failed the first time. So now they're going back to the ballot box in the special election for another override. If it failed once, then you don't change the message. It's not, ooh, it's going to fail again. You know what I mean? Okay, I'll just go vote, no again. So I just, I think we're in a...
I had a question, Scott. Based on the pension, and we're paying 5.7 million now a year to fund it. That'll be fully funded in '28. Does that number now, will it drop down if it's fully funded?
No, this is an accelerated number for the next few years to pay it off. I think the last year might be lower, but then...
I'm sure. I think it takes one large turn.
What happens when it's fully funded? How much would it cost us? Do you have any idea how much we'd save?
No, they're going to fund the open.
We're going to fund the open. They have to fund the liability with the money. We're not going to spend the money on operations, it'll be gone. So we've now funneled it to something else that's not funded. That's how we stay financially.
There'll still be a cost.
There's a minimum liability, which will be fully funded, but the PBO won't be fully funded. That's the big liability. That's, you know, nobody in the world funds the PBO or comes close to it, but if you can...
Well, sometimes, there's a community that did like an override to fund the whole thing.
Well, that's...
What's that? Wellesley did an override, and they paid to fund the whole thing.
Well, when your average tax bill is $21,000.
Crazy.
I mean, we could, we could definitely...
But think of, so think about this, what we do now, like Water and Sewer, we're paying open, we're taking open. So that, in theory, the best way is once we fund the OPEB, right, and we're, you know, and we stop funding appropriate money towards it more aggressively, once you fund it all, if you could take like somebody's compensation and add, and we do this with the Water and Sewer guys now, if you take OPEB costs of what it would cost in X amount of years, we have a trust set up. So in theory, you would never, someone retires, and all those costs would come out of this trust, right? And you're paying into it the whole time, almost like a pension, and you're funding that. So in theory, when somebody retires, you're paying out of that trust, and it's funding itself, so it doesn't affect your operating budget. That's in theory, we, we try to get. That's 10 years, 20 years down the road, if we can ever get there. But that's the idea of it, that that money in the trust would then pay, so you're not taking out of operating. Say, okay, you're retired, we get, this is the cost for retirees on health insurance. It comes out of this trust.
It also, it also has another, another benefit is that the regular pension plan, in years when the market's down.
Yes.
It allows them, the pension plan assets to remain in there. Once you take them out, it's like selling a stock when it's down. Once you take the assets out of, out of the pension to pay retirees, it's not going to go back. But if you don't have to touch that, and you can use the OPEB trust, you can allow those to recover. The market always goes down, comes up. You don't have to take the money out real time to pay retirees.
You would have thought, though, that the pension cost would lower a little bit, even though we...
So the pension cost is completely different than, but OPEB is like health insurance and other costs. So that, no one's paying for that. That's where the money, and then every school employee is on the health insurance, right? The seizures aren't a different pension, but they're all on health insurance.
Yep.
So part of it is, and, you know, I mean, Jeff points out a good thing, like, I don't, and I don't, you know, you gloss, you know, people gloss over, but these are the things long-term of what you talked about, how financially, like, Wendy, myself, and the team, what we're doing that's going to have long-term effects for stability and financials, you know, health for years and years to come that never went on here years ago, and other communities are doing this. But some of these other affluent communities have done this for years, and they've been running...
And they're the first ones, the naysayers, compare us, and say, well, they got 57 people in their DPW, and they have 48 more, more of this. And now they're talking about massive layoffs and overrides that, you know, are significant just to fund operations.
A lot of it would happen with municipalities, is people just say, well, it'll be someone else's problem. I'm going to be here three or four years. Let someone else deal with it. We've tackled, and you guys have been a part of it all these, like, over the years, in town meetings, supporting your finances. We've put plans together. We learned, when I got to you there, we, I learned a lot from, we, we meet with our financial advisors, the DOR, auditors. We, I tackle all kinds of information, and we make lists of how do we approve this, how do we approve that? And we put those things in place, just like we do with capital stuff, like trying to make it so we don't have emergencies, and we fix the HVAC systems, do the buildings. We do that financially, and these things are now, after, you know, 12, 13, 14 years, things are starting to pay off in the sense of, I think, if we can continue on this track... in the sense of, I think, if we can continue on this track, we're gonna be, like I say to people all the time, if we were here ten years before this, or twenty years, we'd be in places, we'd be like a Wellesley or a, a Winfield.
We're not buying salvage title vehicles.
Correct.
Which is, which is.
You know, and I say this all the time, people like laughing off the stage, you gotta be here. I, I, I became on the site, and I say, hey, there's a window broken, and the manager say, well, we can't fix it, we have no money today. I'm like, we're, we're doing so much capital and so much maintenance and preventive maintenance in the whole town, all over there, with sidewalks and, you know, uh, walkways and, and buildings and, and.
Even water and sewer lines?
Yeah.
Everything. They're not broken, we're just relining them.
Because we're not gonna, a normal, like, someone else would come here and say, hey, we're not gonna do more beyond what the ACO said, and then somebody in ten years, it's gonna be a major issue for all the sewer issues that we didn't do. We're doing those, and there's a cost of it, so we're balancing that political, financial thing of like, okay, the rates are gonna go up. The, uh, the ABBA money, using that to do the, the, the water meter replacements, a six million dollar project, that would have to go on to the, the water rates. We, we've used that money to do that, rather, other communities did different things with it. I know people questioned that. This, you know, we think is the best thing for this type of community, right? I mean, they blew it on different. They used it on salaries.
Used it on salaries.
Yep. We didn't do that, we held the money.
Now they can't fund them.
Right?
Right?
Now they can't fund them.
So, but it's, I mean, it's a positive story.
And they still gotta pay for the new water meters, through the, through the rates on top of it all.
And a lot of this stuff is like, the stuff that's like plumbing in the walls, no one knows, like, it's, it's hard to explain to the regular person, because they're just like, well, decent, like, they had calling things. The plowing, the trash removal, and low tax, you know, keep my taxes low. That's what people worry about, but you have to be able to try to do that, but also do the other things. But I think we've changed the way people think in the town. I think people are really excited about taking an initiative and actually paying for it if they have to, of making a, a choice of a direction in the town the way they want it, because things are improving. And so, you know, everybody's gonna say, well, it's not as fast as they wanna be or whatever, but all this stuff takes time, and I think people really think that investing in the town and doing things for quality of life and other things, like playgrounds and all this stuff, that was unheard of when we were kids, they never fixed a play. Some of the playgrounds are the same as when my father was a kid. You know what I mean? They had like sta- stack pole and all that. So I think that we're in a different place where people are willing to, to invest if they feel that there's positive things, and they have trust that the money's being spent correctly. I mean, the school project was a big issue. Everybody, you know, mistrust and worried about building schools, a lot of money, and then everybody's gonna take on debt. But I think that helped prove a lot of things, that the town's, you know, moving in the right direction, and people made that choice, and I think people making the choice. And like Jeff talks about, I don't think people understand that as much as, if we should say it or explain it, but all, a lot of this, this is all being, a lot of it done under the operating budget. The only thing that has come out of the, not in the operating budget, has been the school project, which you have to. Now we're sort of like, you know.
And even that, we saved millions on interest.
Millions. We, we borrowed, majority of the money is under one percent.
Right.
I mean, it's unheard of, like, and we did the project six months ahead of time, and we saved another seven million on the backend.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of good things that we did, but I think, you know, it's the same thing with the, the, uh, Public Safety Building on the other side, the west side of town. That's gonna be something that people have to come together and say, this is what they want to invest in the town, or make it safer and, and better medical response, EMT responses. And, and that's, you know, the Volk is obviously a strain, and we gotta talk about that, but I, I, in overall, we, you know, the, the BS at the beginning, I mean, we're doing pretty good. I mean, I think comparative to other communities, there's obviously, obviously an economic strain, and we've been dealing with that, and it's gonna continue. So we just have to keep, stay the course on, you know, uh, budgeting conservatively and spending within our means. You know, we try to do what we can, and we gotta, somebody's gonna say, oh, that's too much, you know, we only go so much on this or so much on that, but um, I, we get a lot of services as a resident here in Sogus. You know what I mean? Like, we talk about the trash, there's trash is unlimited, you know what I mean? You know, uh, things like that, that we have a compost site, and people pay twenty-five dollars. Go somewhere else, it's almost two hundred dollars, you know, a hundred and fifty if you want it in any other community. Twenty-five bucks, you can bring your yard waste up there.
Charm Center.
Yeah, Charm Center, we have a solar thing, we've done a lot of things over the years that sometimes, you know, I think people just forget, you know, don't remember, new people move in and they don't know that that happened, they just been here for five or six years. So anyways, good, good stuff. Um, what, number five, other insurance, the various property liability, workers' compensation insurance premium estimates have been budgeted based on an increase of approximately eight percent over actual fiscal year twenty twenty-five premiums recommended by the provider. Uh, the premiums will not be finalized until sometime later in the spring, further adjustments to the budget may be required. Um, capital improvements, there are significant capital needs that the town will need to plan and identify funding sources for. Those include, but are not limited to such things as local capital facility needs, infrastructure such as roadway, public safety equipment, such as fire apparatus and other equipment, uh, that is nearing end of life, um, and requiring expensive repairs, as well as funding the Northeast Regional Vocational Capital Assessment for the MSBA school constructive project, construction project. Uh, the estimated fixed costs mentioned above don't take into consideration the contractual wage adjustments, the all agreements have been settled through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. This budget reflects contractual obligations for this fiscal year. So that's the other thing, labor contracts have all been settled, and that, you know, we, we got, you know, put it out four years, so that helps us, um, I think, have unrest. It's just tough to do them all in one year, but I kinda made that choice years ago. And it makes it so you're not dealing with something every year, and you're fighting, and, and you're sort of doing them all at the same time, and it's a lot of work. And that's what we just, I went through in the last year and a half, two years, but now we have them all settled, and it works out pretty good.
It's great.
Budgeting wise too. So like, you know what I mean, you, you now get budget, you don't have to worry about like, where's the money gonna come from? That's what used to go on here, it was like a yo-yo. Like, oh, we have to go to town meetings, or enough money, we're gonna have to make cuts to fund it and all that, we just haven't been, that's another thing, I think that people who've been around, involved in government, but it was always an issue with the, you know, I was, you know, police union for a long time, and we check it in, didn't have contracts, some of the things, we didn't have a contract for nine years, so, um, DPW didn't have a contract for nine years, not a raise. So, you know, I took over, it was pretty, pretty significant, something, I think the fire was like six years, police, I think were six or seven, so. Um, estimated fixed costs, uh, we talked about that. In preparation, uh, for this or any other budget, uh, there are concerns for those items that can vary and may change due to circumstances that occur during the fiscal year. Some items that continue to be a concern are building maintenance costs, utilities, fuel, motor fuel, waste collection and recycling, vehicle maintenance and health insurance as a result of the supply chain issues and the rising cost of goods and services such as motor fuel, electricity, heating fuel. We will continue to monitor these items and they, they have to adjust accordingly. And one of the other things, uh.
One of the questions I was gonna ask was, with our, um, I won't make it too political, but with our fantastic governor and, and the thing that's out there right now about, um, EV trucks and not, not being able to buy diesel vehicles, what's that gonna do for the EV?
I think that put on hold, right?
No, I just watched, I just watched another update tonight.
I don't know, I mean.
So my question is.
So emergency vehicles, I think, are exempt, uh, but I may.
But not public works. Like, if we're gonna order dump trucks and, and, you know, uh, ten wheelers, you know, and, and new sanders and salders, things like that, that's something we have to be considered.
I agree.
You know, uh, I don't know if we're allowed to buy them out of state, if we could buy them in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what the rules are on that, but it's something.
Into it, but it hasn't gone into effect completely.
Well, I, I watched the thing tonight, it's on the eighteen wheelers, it's already in effect, because the Peterbilt store said that they're not gonna keep trucks, I watched, uh, it was on the news, they're not gonna keep Peterbils. He goes, I'm not gonna buy a bunch of EV Peterbilt eighteen wheelers, when I don't, I know the country doesn't have the infrastructure to charge these trucks.
This is the issue with the buses. So they're trying this in mass, and they can't, they have to build a garage, and they can't house, because they all have to be plugged in.
Right.
So it's like a whole different project.
So, I watched this, this is the guy, the, like, regional director for Peterbilt.
Yeah.
And he's like, it's not that I'm opposed, but I don't think we have the infrastructure as a country.
To do it, yeah.
What are you gonna do if somebody's driving through Kentucky?
Yeah.
And they need to charge, and there's only, you know, five percent of the, of the number of charges as there are in Massachusetts.
Right.
So what does a trucker do?
Right.
Once you run out, you can't like walk down to the gas station where, where the thing is diesel fuel, come back and pour it in your truck. What are you gonna run an extension cord? So, that's the problem, is I think they got a little bit ahead of there, a bit ahead of the time, I'm not saying.
Well, it sounds like, yeah, I think the problem is you have to have a balance.
There has to be a balance.
Try to like, phase things, you know, like, we have electric.
Or you say you're gonna buy a lot of your own, or something. You don't say, as of today, that's it, you know, so.
We, we've had electric vehicles, we're one of the first communities to get them, like, I was really excited, and they worked out well, but they, you know, you look at them now and they're not, you know what I mean, like, they're, they're not what they are today, the ones they make today are even better, you know what I mean? But you, I don't wanna have all electric, you wanna kinda have a balance, and I, I'm actually, I like electric vehicles for certain tasks, but not for other.
I mean, my son has one, but it's just, you know, I, I'm concerned about how that's gonna impact us as a community and what we're looking for.
The good thing is, I was gonna say, the part of what I was gonna say when, when you, uh, when you, when you brought this up, is that one of the things that we've done that, that you had years ago, when I was here, everybody's, we, we have bought and improved vehicles and for the DPW police fire, we got two apparatus, we got a ladder truck and apparatus coming.
And a pump.
Second, three years, right? I mean, it's crazy, they're, they're believed time for this stuff. But that's a good thing, because the vehicles, people couldn't drive in these unsafe vehicles. We did things like that should have never happened before my time. And I, you know, and I think that is a positive thing, where it puts us in a better position, the same thing, because we've, it's better, it reduces maintenance costs and we're able to have newer vehicles that help service the town, and they're safe for people. So we bought, we, we bought, uh, five tons that was, I think we got one in, and we're still we have three of them that were waiting, one of them's been almost two year, it'll be two years, what it's still, when they're gonna give it to us in May, what do we, we needed it, the one.
And, and I know the ladder truck's been a need for quite some time, our ladder trucks been.
That's been on a lot. I think we just got an update, it's supposed to be next year or something, this year.
Yeah, we have a, uh, progress payment due, and I think you're seeking delivery.
Yeah, they don't miss those.
I think June, but that's been three years. We wanted the ladder truck three years ago.
Yeah.
And I think the pump is pretty much the same, the same time, I think.
No, that's later. We appropriated it at the same time, but it's coming later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's just something to think about as we are proactively trying to think of what trucks we need to replace, it's something to just remain mindful of. Might have to put a bunch of charges around town so they could plug.
Yeah, we've been looking at.
Middle of the snowstorm.
Yeah, exactly. I gotta get the, I think AAA now has like a battery charger, right?
Do they?
Yeah, they have the trucks, I think they hook it up, you know what I mean, with an electric vehicle.
How many electric vehicles do we have right now?
We have two, but they're older now, and you're not really.
We got them.
Yeah, they've been, we've had them for ten, probably ten, yeah. We had hybrids, but the hybrids for the police were totally mechanically problematic, big time, so we kinda thing, but now we're with the green communities thing, we have to kinda, I think, purchase certain things, uh, as with their guidelines too, so. And everybody's, they're trying to, everybody's linked to funding, right? I mean, I think the president now is saying, you don't do this, we're not gonna fund it, like, every party tries to do this.
Well, I don't think he's gonna push for the green community, so, he won't be pushing EVs.
No, but they.
Elon in his book. I don't think he's, I don't think that's his focus, so.
As we have seen in the past, circumstances have changed dramatically affecting the budget. Estimates for revenues and expenses continue to be taken to minimize the impact on the budget, stabilize services for the residents and maintain current staffing. And to partnership with yourselves, the finance committee, the town meeting, we have been able to present a balanced budget at each annual town meeting, preserve our current double A plus bond rate. As we prepare, uh, prepare the FY twenty-six estimate revenue and expenditure budget, many of the same concerns exist as when the FY twenty-five budget was approved, the estimated revenues are not increasing at the same rate as expenses. The fixed costs increased and contractual obligations continue to absorb, uh, the Proposition Two and a Half and new growth projections. Our estimates do not include the use of one-time source of, uh, funds in order to present a balanced budget. Our estimates, uh, estimate are based on historical trend and use of reoccurring source of revenue. In addition, uh, to estimate appropriation expenditures, the budget contains estimates for items such as state assessments, overlay cherry sheet offsets based on recommendations from the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Those items are itemized on the source and use and funds document under the heading Use of Funds. School Department Fiscal Twenty-Six Estimate Budget Recommendation is thirty-four million and change, uh, an increase of five hundred thousand dollars over the fiscal twenty-five budget voted by town meeting last year. Um, the increase does not include the, uh, indirect costs paid by the town on behalf of the school department included as part of the net total net school spending calculation required by Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So just understand the health insurance on the school side is a million dollars, so they don't count that in their budget, but their budget, it's what?
Million two.
Million two increase that we're projecting for the, just for the.
Meaning to increase, yes.
Increase, so.
Not total cost.
No, no, meaning to increase.
Right, so that's where we, uh, we're at now at this point. Uh, one appropriation that is not including, just to understand, I think last year, I think it was, was it nineteen? School Department brought on nineteen new employees, seventeen and a half new employees last year.
Wow.
But they were gonna make cuts and all that, and then we gave, I, you know, we allocated most of the money they wanted, I think all of it, and they hired seventeen and a half people, and they're looking, I think, to bring on four, five this year off a grant.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's, I think it's four or five, so those are not sustainable, and we, you try to, you know, tell them and explain this, but it's very challenging. The only way to understand it is if you don't give them, you know, the pie in the sky.
So, so basically, with your proposal of the five hundred thousand, then you add in the one point two million on the health insurance, never mind pension in, you know, whatever pension impact.
Correct.
It's really, it's really one point seven, it's really, we're, we're basically, one point seven, call it two million bucks to the schools, and then when you go back to your summary, your summary sheet.
Two points, yeah.
Our increase in the levy is two million seventy-four thousand, the new growth is five hundred grand. So we're going up two point five, of which two million is automatically allocated just for the schools.
Right.
And that's only at five hundred thousand, they're asking for two point five million.
Correct. And, and honestly, like, you've got, you've been around now with the argument of like, I don't care about the schools, we don't give up mine. I try to give as much as I can, we, we all want the schools to succeed.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, obviously, it's a budgetary thing. I mean, again, we'll talk about it, the guy in my office, they laid off thirty, thirty people, lost the schools. Like, there's, there's a whole bunch of schools that are in the similar situation right now, and they're gonna lay off anyway, just to pay the rate.
Stone, Melrose, Wakefield.
Yep, and that's like, that's already a phase, so that's already a phase before this, when they got the money, the, uh, the, the pandemic money, they hired all kinds of stuff, and then they had to make layoffs like three, three or four years, three years ago. And then now they're in another thing where they got a bunch of money with the chapter seventy, and they spent all the money, you know, on positions. And I'm not saying they don't need them, I'm not an expert in that, but if it's not sustainable, you're gonna be careful. Like, everybody wants to hire all kinds of people, it, that eats your operating budget.
Remember the, the last calculation I did, I think the town side had about a hundred and seventy-five employees, and the schools had over, a little over four hundred.
Correct.
Now we do pay pension and health insurance for those extra two hundred, two hundred employees.
Yeah, although the teachers don't get pension, they get everything else, but the other employees are on pension.
Yeah, the teachers are in the state, right.
Yeah, for pension, but not for health.
Right.
Health insurance.
Um, did I read it all, or where did I leave off?
Yeah, talked about snow and ice.
One, uh, one appropriation that is not included in the source and use of the snow and ice, deficit the cost of snow and ice. There's always a concern, as this time, um, we have a snow and sanding salt events in the upcoming weeks. Um, obviously, we've used a lot more this year than we've done, uh, I think in the last couple of years, but, um, no, we're okay, but I think it's, you know, starting to creep up there for sure. Um, as this budget, and then we usually pay for it within the, within our, the year that we use it, and we'll usually gotta fund that out of free cash.
And we keep the, and we keep the budgeted amount for snow and ice low, because if you go up, it has to stay up.
Cause the legal deficit, right? We, this allows us, DOR has a rule, they allow us to, if, if, and this is what the town used to do before, and it was not a good practice, but you would carry over a legal deficit for snow and ice, so you could bring a million dollars over, and then you'd have to cut your budget, basically, a million dollars. You have to raise a million dollars just to pay last year's snow and ice, and it's like a bad.
Yeah, bad trend, snowball effect.
Right. So you have to park the money somewhere, but you don't wanna put it in a budget, because if you put a million dollars, you don't use it, now you're stuck with that million dollars. You have to, you know what I mean, and if something else happens.
That is a silly rule.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, as this budget process moves forward, there are areas of the estimated budget that will continue to evolve and change such as state aid, local revenue estimates, state estimates, and other fixed costs. So one of the things with this letter, I think, is we're emphasizing that things change, that there's a lot of unknowns and estimate. We talk about things that fluctuate. I think everybody knows that now, I think we've been in so many years of understanding how that works, because before, everybody'd be like, let's spend every dime or why can't we do this or do that? And I think, you know, so we do talk about it over and over in the budget, but I think it's just so people realize that there's a lot of fluctuation, like, this is not a, you know, it's a budget, it's not like an exact, if you're gonna say, well, you said that there's gonna be three hundred dollars for a bottle of water, and it's three hundred and fifty dollars, well, it's an estimate and it's a budget, so think they're fluid, but we've done a good job. And it's recognized from the, what, the board, uh, that we've done a good job, budgetary department head, Wendy, that, you know, managing the budget, keeping it spending within our means, we're not spending, or spending what we don't have. And I always say, if you have a savings, and you don't put the money away, and you spend it, it's no longer a saving. That's a big issue, you know. Operating budget, you're trying to not let it expand too much, is, is, and that's the difference with the school, whatever. You gotta be careful, if you expand too much, then that's what's gonna be a bigger drain on you, you know, for over and over years, years to come.
Thank you for reviewing the letter with us. Um, Wendy, would you please review the sources and use the document?
Sure.
Thank you.
So part of the process that we go through every year and keep checks and balances and make sure that, um, we know that we have a balanced budget is we create the source and use document and it ties to the, um, tax recapitulation sheet or tax recap sheet that we eventually complete in the fall and, um, when the board of assessors comes to the board of selectmen asking them to set a tax rate. So it all ties together, we start using all of their online services with the D O R during this process, make sure that everything ties out. So we start off with, uh, source of funds on the source and use document. Primary source of revenue is the, uh, property taxes. We start with the prior levy limit from fiscal year twenty five, that was eighty two million nine hundred and ninety eight thousand two twenty eight. And then under the restrictions of proposition two and a half, the two and a half percent increase is, um, just over two million dollars, two million seventy four thousand nine fifty six. We estimate new growth conservatively, that's new construction, building permits, uh, new things that are, um, uh, being built, um, and constructed. It's, it's as well as, uh, personal property tax with businesses. If a business expands, the, uh, you know, they might have to bring in more equipment to operate their business, so that's also considered new growth.
So right, the other thing I think that, and I know you guys all know this now, when I talk about it every year, because years ago, people would come up with these things saying, well, why don't we increase? This is what they used to do to play around, play around with the budget. Oh, we don't have enough money for operating, we'll just increase the new growth, we'll increase revenues. And then all of a sudden you got a revenue deficit, that's how they used to do it before, or you have, which is illegal, and then, or you'd have, uh, new growth at, you know, say a million dollars, but you'd only bring in five hundred. And we always try to take a number that makes sense, um, that we know we're gonna get. And in fact, I think a year or two ago.
Last.
Last, last fiscal year, we didn't even make the five hundred dollars.
No, it's five hundred and eighty.
Five hundred and eighty, we just made it. So that's why we don't like say, oh, we had a million two last year, why can't we use a million two this year? Because it's all changes and projects don't come online and they don't get billed. Um, so it's, it's a way of, you know, just, I think, make, make sure that we stay conservative and we don't end up over, over budget, you know, with different estimates.
So then the other items that you see there, uh, that comprises the, uh, amount of the debt exclusion on various projects, the Beaumont Middle School repair project we had many, many years ago, the high school, middle school, new construction project, and the Beaumont, uh, Veterans Beaumont reconfiguration project. So it's a total of, uh, and that's, that's added on top of the levy. You know, that's what a debt exclusion means for the people who may not, may not know that. It means it's added to the total tax levy. So our total, uh, property tax levy for real and personal property taxes is ninety two million five ninety eight seven ten for the upcoming fiscal year of twenty twenty six. We have the cherry sheet estimates from the state, twenty one million eight ninety two five fifty eight. And then our local receipts, those are recurring receipts that the town of Saugus receives directly, either from its residents or those who do business in Saugus. And we're estimating those at nine point, uh, nine million eight hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars. And basically what comprises those, I think the town manager touched on a, a few of those uh, during his comments, was the motor vehicle excise tax, um, meal and room excise tax, penalties and interest, uh, fees that we collect for various reasons, rental from, uh, various properties, licensing and permits, both building permits, other licenses and permits, uh, many of that, the board of selectmen issues, as well as code enforcement, uh, investment income, uh, reimbursements we get from Medicaid. And then there's these other items we call miscellaneous, non-recurring that for whatever the reason is, we might receive it one year, but we don't receive it every year. And so that's something that we, we sort of budget flat and, and don't take that into consideration.
And just to put into perspective, of the nine point eight million dollars of local receipts, motor vehicle excise tax is four point eight million.
Correct.
And meals and room tax is two point two million. So you're talking seven million of the nine point eight million is excise tax and meals and room tax. The other stuff is just a bunch of other.
Yeah, we're not, we're not high on the local, local aid either, which, you know, it's.
Well, that's not surprising, considering we're a town.
Right, and it's good because the, the fact is that people don't realize it's tough economies. If you're relying on that, like you're in a city like Chelsea or Lynn, like they cut like local aid by, and this went on years and years. And I think we're gonna end up in this area, because I think the money that they've kitted in the budget in the state is eventually gonna run out, they're using, which you shouldn't do, they're using monies that are one-time monies for to, to plug the budget on operating. And then eventually it's gonna be someone else's problem, but, you know, if you get your, you know, if you're getting local aid and you're getting fifty percent of local aid of your budget, like say one of these cities, and they cut it by ten percent, that's a significant thing, you have a major issue because you're relying on it. So that's why in some ways you're in a better position, because we don't have a ton of percentage. I think we're like under ten percent of local aid, I think it was seven or one, it's ten, I don't even know, but it's not a ton that we, we, uh, rely on. And I think that puts us, it's the same thing with grants, when we look at grants, we're looking at things that help supplement something. We're not looking to say to try to replace and hire people on grants, right? We, we know the other departments are hiring people on grants and then now who pays for them? That's, there's seventeen and a half people last year and for this year. So we try to look at grants that are gonna help supplement and make it an ease so that we're not, we don't have to go to an override or a debt exclusion for particular projects. That's been the strategy since.
I know people, uh, been teasing me the last year about all the chicken places on Route One. I says, well, them chicken places are bringing in one point three million dollars in meal stacks every, every year to the town.
They chose all the chickens with no eggs now, that's why the eggs are.
There won't be many chicken places left, so. Wendy, the investment income that we get, is that on the, um, excess funds, on stability reserves and stuff?
Yeah, part of it.
It, it's not on any of the stabilization funds, so that money, the investment income stays with that fund, but it's on the, the general fund operating excess that we have, yeah.
And what happens to earnings within the O P E trust that stays and grows?
Same time.
Yes, yep.
But then, you know, obviously we're limited to what you can do for investments, because it's cost money and it's different. It's not like you can put it in the stock market and, you know, get thirty five percent or forty percent, you know what I mean? So I think a lot of people think like, oh, we have people, we have people call, say, can I come in and meet? Can I come in and meet with you, like I can invest the town's money and do all this stuff, you can't, we can't do it.
Let's day trade the stability reserves. Let's put it all in crypto.
All in black. Black or red.
So a couple of the other items that we have as, um, funding sources on the, on the general fund is the, uh, indirect costs for the water and sewer enterprise funds for the cost that we pay in the general fund. Uh, primarily, you know, health insurance and benefits in some portion. We review that annually as part of this process and with the Abrahams Group, when we're going through the process of setting water and sewer rates, um, making sure that, uh, you know, things aren't getting out of hand there. Uh, the other item that we do have is an amount from certified free cash this year for pay-as-you-go capital, uh, facilities and property maintenance, capital improvements of five hundred thousand. And then there was hundred thousand, that is in the Department of Public Works for capital improvement. So the total, total source of funds is a hundred and twenty six million, uh, going toward the general fund. And then the other funds, water and sewer enterprise funds, that's fifteen point three million for a total of available funds of a hundred and forty one million five fifty one nine twenty four. And how we're using those funds, the municipal general fund operating budgets, eighty four point eight million dollars. The school, thirty four point two million dollars for a total of a hundred and nineteen thousand. And then we, um, are charged or assessed from the state, various county and state cherry sheet charges, they call them, um, six point two million dollars there, plus another seventy three for offsets. And then we have an estimate in right now for the allowance for abatements and exemptions that covers exemptions that various residents may receive for various reasons and any abatements that the assessors grant, um, towards real estate and any potential, um, appellate tax void liability for reduction in, uh, property values.
Can I ask you a question? Um, I looked in some of my back, uh, budget books and that number was five hundred thousand, do we anticipate more this year?
Um, well, we have a couple of cases that are with the A T B right now that could be significant.
So if we go to trial, then, you know, could be, and if we settle, so it's a matter of trying to figure out where we're gonna be, but some of them are bigger properties, so we have to make sure that we fund it correctly.
Thank you.
And we do have the increase in the exemptions when, um, the school was voted, the exemptions were increased as well.
Seniors and all that and veterans and spouses and all that.
A hundred percent increase.
We got a, we did a hundred percent increase when we went and passed the school vote. So people actually made out getting, when we, the school vote passed, a lot of people actually got more money back than they were getting before, even with the increase in the taxes for the overall. That was a good strategy and I think it worked, helping people get on more.
And then the only other two funds are the operating budgets for the water and sewer enterprise. Those are just offsets to what you saw on the source side. So you see the balance is a hundred and forty one five fifty one for use of funds and the source of funds. So at this point right now, um, we have estimates that balance.
And, and the budget itself, uh, as a whole, you guys are pretty familiar with it, the setup and all that, and you go through each department.
That's, yeah, that's what we do.
We have a lot of the stuff we can move quickly through and then the bigger budgets, I think you have questions.
Um, and as I asked before, if you could, as we go through the budgets, just, if you could just highlight, I mean, we could ask the questions too, but again, any new positions or positions that might have been in the budget that you haven't hired yet? Um, any sort of, anything that's significant that, and I know you brought up a lot of this as well, but.
Yeah, yeah, as it comes up, I'll, I'll identify what I can.
That's great, and are there raises for the town employees in here?
Uh, I believe there are, yes.
Is it three percent, four percent?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so the first, well, we could look at the budget that has zero.
The moderator.
I don't think I wanted to have a problem with that. Uh, the next budget is the board of selectmen, is there anything that anybody would like to? Our town manager's budget, any questions on the town manager's budget?
This has been brought current for the.
I don't, I don't know, we should try to figure it out, but yeah.
It looks like it's based on.
I just wanna make sure it's, I just, yeah, ma- ma- made sure.
It's based on.
There'll be enough there.
Fix it.
Based on the salary, it looks like that was the number we talked about.
Right.
So it looks like it's current.
Yeah, yeah, I hope so, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, be a good fix. And, um, the only thing that was outstanding on me, you had that hold in there for the truancy officer that.
So we put a little bit in that thing, because I think there's something that they're looking at that might be an expense and I'm willing to, I'm actually trying to introduce them to it and they, I think will help them with, uh, registration and stuff. So we, I think we write, I had you move this, move some of it to expense, I don't know if we split it or we just split the whole thing, okay.
Where is the budget?
Just move to expenses rather than salaries, because the schools never utilize the sal-, never utilize it. I put it in there so they can use the police department as truance officers and to investigate if people weren't residents and stuff like that. And they just have never accessed it, but I didn't wanna take it out. People say, well, you have it in there, you're not spending it. It's up to them to activate it, but I never, in the past, like eight years ago or whatever, they, I, they would say, well, we don't have any money to do this, we don't have any money to do anything with the residency. So I said, okay, well, I'll put money in my budget, because if they give you the money, use it for something else. And they've never accessed it, but we have provided police services and investigators.
So it's in the police budget now?
So no, it's still here, but what I did is I took it out of salaries and put it into expenses, because I.
So it's still in your budget, just not, okay.
So I think, because I think there's something that is a platform they can use that might be able to help them with registration and residencies.
I assume it's a professional and technical gentleman.
I, I, I have a big star right here, yeah, because that one up eighty five thousand, so, okay.
Everything's gone up and those are the different consultants that we have, and we do different, uh, tasks. And a lot of them are lying, they could go into other budgets, but a lot of them, I think we just keep them in for ease.
Okay, any other questions in the town manager's budget?
No.
Great. Finanziers, please, budget.
I think we said we were gonna take out the finance committee, because they're not allowed to have a stipend last year.
I think we have for expenses, because they do copying and stuff, right?
That's not a stipend to the board, that, that would be for a clerk.
For the clerk.
Oh, that's, that's, so we just haven't, we haven't applied any for this year? There's no, that's a catch-up?
Yeah.
That's a catch-up allocation there, I get it, I get it, okay. So that's a clerk position.
Yeah.
Do we have to use the reserve fund tracks, I don't think they're in there?
We have a, I think we, like, we, when we first put it in, we did it to, to go through the exercise and it was like a political rattle, but we ended up, we ended up doing it and we wanted to do it, um, I think we put it in there because no one knew about it, like that you could do it, there's a combo. So in other words, that hundred thousand dollar reserve, is it a hundred we kept it up?
What I think, yeah.
It's a hundred thousand, it's in there, and if we had some sort of an emergency where we need to access money, we would only need to go to finance committee and get a vote and the board of selectmen, not the town meeting. So we keep that in there, we did it once to kinda like, just test the waters. People like, it was so different, everything, but they were all like, you know, you can't do, you know, it was a big thing, but it was, you could do it, we explained everything and it was, uh, we never had that in there before, so we put.
Was that first fiscal year closed?
Yeah, it might have been like the first thing, I said, let's try using it to make everybody, educate them on it. It was an interesting exercise, but we did do it and the selectmen voted on it and the finance committee, we accessed some of the money and used it for something, I think we did have like a, you know, what we call an emergency.
Yeah, I just didn't, I remember the one time I, I remembered you saying that afterwards, okay, very good. Um, accounting, are you fully staffed for accounting?
Uh, I believe we are, yeah.
Great. Assessors?
Yes.
All set?
Yep.
Any questions, sir? Treasure collector.
I think we're, we have a couple of part-time positions that we have in there, are temporary and where also we have a couple, um, one that we're trying to, right?
I have one full-time principal clerk that's vacant, um, I have one floater that's vacant and then the utility.
Yeah, yeah.
But in, in the budget, they're both part-time.
Yeah, so those are just like in case we can get somebody to fill in, and she's got somebody, I think, that fills in now. So it's like you have some access to money to, to get somebody in, but there's a full, there's like two full-time. One is, that has to do with the water, because the person left, so.
So I have one principal clerk position that's full-time, that is vacant.
What department does that fall with them?
Mine.
Treasury.
It's on the top section, principal clerk. It's a union position.
Oh.
Yeah, 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 sorry, yeah.
Got it, got it.
And then the utility billing manager is vacant, she moved back to Florida and then the water meter technician position is vacant, so.
Oh, she moved back to Florida, the one that, she was good too, right?
Yes, phenomenal, her personal life took her back to Florida.
Oh, that stinks.
She was unbelievable.
Yeah.
She met her, right?
Yeah, yeah.
She was really good, very squared up.
Very nice too.
She knew that whole system and that would have been, she was like a perfect fit, it was like a.
She can't do it remote?
Yeah. I thought it was remote, then.
Where she came from, they could say.
Daily bullets, give me the five bullets.
She's doing an implementation in Florida with the same meters actually, so she and I do.
Really?
Go back and forth with each other about questions, so it's good.
Any other questions for treasure collector? See none, uh, legal counsel, I noticed that that has included.
Um, just, I don't, I don't know what page we're on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm on legal. I'm on legal.
Oh, legal, okay, I thought it was just the, yeah, the town. No, no, we're definitely increasing, we have a lot more, um, we have a lot more things going on for technical assistance and for, uh, litigation labor, we spent a ton of labor, uh, with the contracts. So I think we increased it a little bit, um, because we, we had, uh, we had something that we just had, we won summary judgment on, but it's, it's, I don't really get into the details. Uh, we had to hire like three or four expert witnesses for the, for, to be deposed and everything and they were like twenty or thirty grand apiece, so it's added up pretty quick. But we were successful in summary judgment.
Anybody else have any questions on legal counsel? Any resources, do we have a, a journalist?
We do, uh, I think, I don't know what the titles are, so they'll go by me, because I'm not a big title person, but we have one person there now, um, we had somebody leave.
We have, we have the manager, we don't have a director or a journalist.
Okay, so whatever the titles are, yeah, I don't, is that her title?
Yeah.
I don't know what the difference is, I just, they do H R and they, they, H R people hung up on titles, for sure. But, uh, we have two positions that we have open there that we'd like to, um, get. We've shifted some of the work that was there back into accounting, uh, benefit stuff, so we're okay, but we're in process of trying to, um, at, at least get somebody at the same level of what we have there now and not necessarily a director, but we may look at that, um, because a lot of people don't realize that H R, that office does all our legal claims, they do all this, like somebody hits property and does property image, they process everything down there for that and they do a whole bunch of other things, um, outside of it and they do also support the school system.
There's some of the avenues positions to fill though. We see the town, H R, so they don't stay long and finding the right people. We have like, you know, an H R director, then we have people under, under her and then we have a Q R I S person that does all the benefits and all that stuff.
A D E I, right?
Yeah, we, we do have a committee. I am not on it, but we do have one.
How long is the H R director's position in Vegas?
Um, I think a little bit, so we've gone, we, so we've had like, uh, so I don't know if you remember Gabby that was there, she, she had a baby and then she left, she had another baby. so I don't know if you remember Gabby that was there, she, she had a baby and then she left, she had another baby, so she got a job that's fully remote, I think so.
Been a couple of years.
Yeah.
Any other questions on human resources?
I just wanna know, with these positions that are open, what's your source of advertising?
So we're on Monster and MMA, we try to like, you know, keep it still, like the girl downstairs is like, you put it up for a while, if you leave it up all the time, then people don't apply, so you gotta kind of strategy, and part of it is, one of the big things we're working on now is to try to get another person in HR, we had two for a while, and you just need somebody that's fully doing recruiting, and the other person try to handle the other stuff, and we don't have that now, so that what happens is you get tied up, like, you know, if you're, you only can work on a couple of positions at a time, because when you go on Monster, you're getting a thousand resumes and interest of people that aren't even qualified, and then.
And even though you bump the salary to try to attract talent?
Yeah.
They don't, yes.
At those numbers, you're not, you're not gonna get an HR director.
Yeah, I agree.
I can tell you right now.
That's why.
My QRS person's making more than the HR director.
So basically, I keep that as a placeholder, because if we do get somebody that's really qualified, I want to have that ability to put them on. But I, I'm looking just to try to get somebody at the same level, so you have two people that work as a team that are like, whatever you want to call it, manager, whatever they want to call it, you know what I mean, but they're doing similar tasks and sharing it, and that's then the strategy, and if we do get somebody, because the worst thing you can do is put somebody in a higher position that really shouldn't be there, because then now you can't hire that position, because you have somebody there.
Yeah, right.
You know, so it's, it's a, it's a work in progress.
Oh, yeah, you know what I mean? So you have to take this.
I get it.
Right, and apply it.
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, we're now on page thirteen, we're looking at IT. Uh, the professional technical general went up substantially, is that, I remember talking last year about cybersecurity.
Yeah, so we're trying to bring, yeah, part of that is we're trying to bring on somebody that just completely does that, we've had a couple of audits, and I think we want to have some, a company that monitors it, and plus we have an increase with, you know, what their costs are and, you know, different things, obviously, one investment.
Wendy, just a question, in our systems here, I've seen a bunch of clients have issues, uh, what are we, are we using a dual authentication system for when we're logging in?
Some, some offices have that, like here.
Definitely on the finance side and in the HR side?
Yeah, yeah, but not, not everybody.
No? Yeah, so that's gonna be an investment that you, that you're gonna, we're gonna probably have to look into, because the dual authentication is becoming really, really important.
Yeah, it's, it's whether or not you go security token for the authentication.
Yeah.
Who, who, you don't want to put it on their personal cell phone.
No.
It's a whole other issue.
You gotta have a work cell phone as that security token, so, yeah.
We've done it on the ones that are like important, and we, you know, that, as you know, they probably, they keep it low-key, but there's other municipalities. If they want to hack you, they're gonna get in, yeah, I mean, the biggest companies in the world, Fed- Fedality, everything they get into.
This past year was the biggest we've seen in cyber crimes, ransom payments actually having to be made to release their, their information.
Big time.
Clients, they, they, it's always, the ones I've seen for them in the last eighteen months, they've all been Russian companies, Russian hackers, and the settlements have gone anywhere from six hundred thousand to four million.
Wow.
To get there.
There's been other municipalities.
And what's scary, and what's scary is the insurance companies are so used to it now, that they set up cyber crime teams that actually show up like a SWAT team.
Yeah.
They have negotiators, they have attorneys, they have IT specialists, they come in with a team, help rebuild your systems, they got a negotiator working to negotiate with the Russians to get your information back, it's, I said, can you imagine insurance companies actually have to build out a practice for this because it's so common there, so.
What happens to the premium?
Yeah, through the roof, of course.
Yep.
So I've seen it more and more now, and, and some of my more sophisticated, not the smaller clients, the bigger clients, the ones with the healthcare risk and HIPAA regulations and all that stuff.
Private, we, we still get emails from, you know, it's random addresses that say, oh, you know, Brendan or Reagan, can you change my direct deposit account?
Yeah.
You know, so the two finance offices are very in tune to all of that, and random invoice comes in the mail, we go, is this a real company?
Yeah, right, exactly, no, that's, that's.
I mean, how many text messages and emails did we get in a week, can't click here?
Telling you, you got unpaid tolls, that unpaid toll.
I don't trust anything.
Everybody got unpaid.
Like the whole thing with the medical bills, like if you go to the doctor and you get like, you don't know if, when they're texting you saying you're like, what? What are you talking about?
Click on this link, click on this link to.
And then, and then even with the insurance thing, they were, we were just talking about this today, they'll send out stuff like, you know, deductible or something, they'll send out a thing saying, well, what I understand goes on is a lot of these hospitals, they're trying to get you to pay something that you don't have to pay. That's a discounted thing because of your insurance, so they send the thing out.
They're trying to get you to pay the contractual allowance.
Correct.
Because the, the health insurance company.
And they'll send the bill and call you and say, oh, you didn't.
If one out of ten people pay it, it's found money, they're not planning on getting it anywhere.
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
Yep, it's illegal and they still go scary worlds.
Yeah.
Uh, the next budget is the town parks budget on November fourteen and fifteen. Any questions on that?
Is that two people on the full-time?
Um, it should be, uh, clerk and assistant.
What did, did we eliminate the election coordinator?
No, it's in a different.
Okay, so yeah, page sixteen is election and registration.
Yeah, thanks for that, I thought this thing, yeah. Did we break that out recently?
No.
That's always been separate, yeah.
I always get confused.
It just happens to sit in there, so I think the thing belongs in there.
Well, technically it's on the same department, I don't even know why it started the same.
Is the person who was serving there temporarily not permanent?
I don't think so, I don't think so, we just have floaters that cover.
Okay.
We have like, there's nobody there permanently.
Cause I just saw somebody in the office, I wasn't sure if they.
Oh, no, no, we have somebody, we have a couple of, we have like two floaters that cover.
Next, we're on page eighteen, conservation commission. Questions on that? Page nineteen, the planning board. Page twenty, the board of appeals. And then we have questions on page twenty-one, department of planning and economic development.
Only openings we have in that department.
Where is this?
To economic development.
Planning, so we just added one, right, on there, planning and development?
Yeah.
Yep, so.
So we have one position, we have one in there now, and then we're, we have another one open.
You have the coordinator opening, and the planner still.
Right.
Okay, right, so there's one position.
Yeah.
And then you have a, a principal clerk.
Oh, so I, so what I did is, we're looking at doing is, um, the planning department and the engineering department, trying to build up. So we're looking at bringing on a clerk that's in here, that would split time, which is a good continuity between planning board, uh, planning department and, um, and the engineering department. And then they would obviously have, you know, coordination with the planning, uh, board, so we're looking at bringing in the staff, so that's what's in there now.
Any luck, any luck with the economic development coordinator?
I don't know, I don't go by titles, but the other position, we actually, I have interviews tomorrow, no, tomorrow, uh, on Thursday, two people that look really good, so we don't normally, you don't hire them right away, so we, I, they just, they just divide, I think we're trying to get them in, a couple of people that are pretty promising, or at least one, so.
But the one that we filled during the year has been working out okay?
Pretty good, yeah.
Great. Can I just ask a question on that? So when we're seeing more and more things closing on Route One, right? What does our, uh, planning and economic department, do we, do you send them into, you know, trying to negotiate another company or someone coming into sagas, what is our role as far as trying to get others to?
So they have a whole state department, they have a department with a scum wolf, that, um, when people like say companies want to move.
Yeah.
So we register with them, like certain parcels and how big they are and what's vacant, so that when a company comes in, their, their contact is like, uh, Peter Milano does a part of that, so they'll contact them and say, what do you have for locations, and they have a whole map that'll show sagas, effort, wherever, of what they have available and what they're trying to cover industry, and then they try to help make those placements.
So does it have to be a particular size of a lot, or can it just be anything?
I think they look, I think they have certain minimums that they're looking for, to like, you know, like, so that a business that wants to come in and somebody says, they go to the states, they have a, I, you know, a tech company, and, you know, what do you have for space that's, you know, this location north of, north of Boston, then our stuff that we have would be, would pop up and they give them options, and then they have the contact information for the owners and all that. So it's generally like the state and the, our economic development thing is in contact with the state about that, but we don't go out and market for businesses like in the sense of, you know, you know, like it's more, that's like more of a higher level state thing, you know what I mean? And a lot of it has to do with, those vacancies are everywhere, it really has to do with what you have to do for rents and trying to attract people to come in, we've tried to diversify over the years, because when you just have restaurants, when the restaurants fail or whatever, that's what happens. If you have other things like, you know, balance of it, then sometimes it's not.
Well, I also think you gotta work, the planning department will work with the landlords, the owners.
Correct.
Because if the owner doesn't want to have,
Yeah.
you know, a certain type of business in there, you can advertise all you want.
Yeah.
Then when they go to the landlord, the landlord says, no, I'm not renting to you.
Right.
Yeah, then we look, yeah.
Get bad credit or just, it'd be a million different reasons why a property owner wouldn't rent you.
So in theory, I think people think like, oh, the economic, they're gonna get people and they're gonna go on a, you know, you're, you know, Russia or Europe and say, oh, come on over here with a company, come on to sagas, like it's more, that's more at a higher level, like with the, with the state, and the state has all these locations, and there's people that are like, with the business, uh, I figured what they call them, business liaison, what's Peter's, uh, Anthony, you know?
I don't know what his title is, but that's, that's exactly.
That's what he does, and he connects with all the businesses and tries to get them, you know, located if they want to come to Massachusetts, like they're like, uh, you know, Massachusetts is, you know, uh, green friendly, and if it's a green community that, you know, a green company that wants to come, then they'll try to find a location for them and seek it out, but I think business-wise, it's, I don't, you know, you'd have to, it's put more in an economic thing, like in other words, like the economy is, is where somebody would want to re, like locate, like have like, I don't know, we had that, what were those places at the mall that were gonna come in and then they never did? That gaming thing, the bowling or something, all that.
Covid hit.
Yeah, they just kinda.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, I, I just, I don't know what other thing you could do other than, you know, because a lot of the stuff is not set up for that. We have a lot of cars on Route One, so it's like set up for restaurants, yeah, but I'm seeing a lot of places, a lot of people try to find where they can get traffic like that, they have a hundred thousand cars a day on Route One, so it's a prime place for business, but I think that, you know, obviously things are adjusting because the value's gonna change, like look at like, all this stuff is changing, you think, they're still trying to charge big money because they have bills, but I don't think people are willing to pay all that anymore.
So it'd really be like the small place would be up to the leaser?
Up to the what, yes.
Right, yeah, cause I was just thinking like, you know, Michael's is gone, Joanne's is closing, you know, but how do you get a hobby lobby here, like how do you, do you know what I mean?
So it's the, the, well, who owns that property, they profit, I mean, they're gonna have to figure out an aggressive marketing plan to try to bring businesses and attract them by either lower rents or some kind of, you know, incentives and all that, I mean.
I know they have some empty buildings over by Michael's, I heard they left because their rents were too high.
Yeah.
Most of the problems on empty buildings.
They know they won't bend, they own the property, they don't owe anything, they just pay taxes, they want like crazy money.
Crazy, and I can't tell you how many people have called me about going in there and just can't strike a deal.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, true.
Hamilton Street, there, there's been a bunch of turnover in Hamilton Street too, for the rents, you know?
Just to compare, they're thirty-five dollars a square foot, I get twenty-five, you know, and my, my plaza is a heck of a lot nicer than that one.
Right.
So that's why they're empty.
Yep, so, agree.
Too bad, seeing all these.
That makes a big difference. Come by the foot, come by.
They have triple that, they have, you know, common maintenance fees and all the stuff.
Build out, so.
Yeah, and thieves and.
Then the thing doesn't work any year and they lost, they get all their money back, you know, do a whole build out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Just curious. Uh, so we're on page twenty-two now, um, the public safety police department. I noticed that some of the line items have gone up on the, on page twenty-two, is that just something that you negotiated?
I'm not sure, but I think I, one of the things is we have a bunch of retirements coming, and I think they've notified, so there's probably an increase in one of the line items for, uh, sick time buy, buyout.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we're in the, we're in the process, actually, I have interviews tomorrow, we're looking, I think, hiring a five, five new officers here.
Is that what the overlap for hiring is, if somebody retires, somebody else comes?
So we try to hire ahead, because it takes like, for a police officer, different than all the other departments, if I, when you start the process of having civil service and all kinds, honestly, until they're like trained, they academy, and when there's academy, when you're talking almost a year or more, before they actually hit the street.
Um, we have two part-time enforcement officers, are they both hired?
On which thing?
I'm, I'm talking about the police, under the police department.
Parking, so, uh, one is in, is there full-time, and then we're working out the other one, but I think we have another one coming on part-time, so.
Because that's a big question that we get a lot, parking, so.
Yeah.
It brings in a lot of money for the town.
Yeah, well, once we get another ACO officer, we're gonna be writing more tickets there, so people are calling. People are calling now with the sidewalk, they want people fined if they don't shovel the sidewalk, I mean, it's off their cars towed, I mean, they towed twenty-something cars the last storm.
You would know it riding around town, there's some big cars.
I mean, they could, they could, they more, they'd have to do a bigger thing, but then you'll get the calls saying, I can't believe they're giving tickets and they're towing cars, you know what I mean? So it's like a balance, but you'd hope people would figure it out, when it's a storm of that nature, you gotta like Essex Street and all that, they gotta get the cars off the, off the roadway, otherwise you can't pop, can't clear the streets.
I, I, I had a lot of phone calls, like every storm, of people that just didn't move their cars.
So if we get another storm like that, I'm gonna go out myself and you're gonna get the calls that they, we towed too many cars, so, I can promise you that.
They ticketed too.
Yeah, but you don't understand, I think people like, it's like you can't.
I've seen cars there for days with the snow still.
Oh, yeah, I know it, oh, yeah.
But like Essex Street is pretty, is pretty bad, it's still now, the snow just melted now.
It's my standard.
But they're not even, doesn't look like they moved the cars?
No, they haven't, a lot of them are there for days.
Yeah.
On, uh, page twenty-three, there's a line item called professional and technical tech technology, and goes from one thirty-five to one sixty-eight, is that the crime software?
Which ones are?
That's the, um, radio, the new radio.
Oh, communication.
Oh, communication stuff, oh, the Comcast, yeah, yeah, that's, so we went to fiber optics with Comcast, so that's the bill for client, I think it was in a different, if it was in a different department or we just got to start getting the bill.
We used to charge the telephone.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so we used to have it on telephone.
For their own lines, now it's gonna be paid out of their own budget.
Yeah, we just made the, changed it over.
So now we are on page twenty-five, public safety fire department. Does anybody have any questions regarding the fire department? Is it the overtime went up a hundred thousand? Is that something to go, I assume negotiated with the union contract?
No, I think, I mean, part of it is because of, uh, increases in the contract and others, I think we're trying to see where the trend is, I mean, we have a, uh, one of the things I think we talked about this a couple of years ago, we put a designated captain in the car, it's a big safety thing, so that the captain is not on the apparatus, so there's a captain that's running the scene, that isn't actually working the, the fire, so, um, that's, there's a cost involved in that, because it's a one-to-one fill, but I, I think it's better for the public safety and we sort of worked that out, uh, you know what I mean, it's a better benefit, and I think part of that cost is in there as well.
Yeah, I did notice in twenty.
More than they sort of, more than what they told us, you know, we tried to estimate it, but it's a little bit wrong.
Yeah, no, I, I did.
It's a good thing for the, honestly, public safety wise, it's really good.
Yeah, I just see in twenty twenty-four, it's up to that, it was at that level, and then it went down a little bit.
Yeah, so think about this, like if you, if you have like four guys on a, on a, uh, a, um, a truck, and they go to a scene, one of those persons work in the fire, but they're also on the truck, so this allows a cap.
Rate, you get a date, they're gonna be hired.
Yeah.
I, I just, I looked at that and then I looked at the twenty twenty-four, so, yeah.
No, twenty-four is six months, four sixty-eight, six months.
But a lot of that fluctuates too, it's not all one.
Here is twenty-four, twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five.
I'm looking at the six thirty, twenty, I'm looking at the twenty twenty-four, eight twenty-five.
Then the four sixty-eight.
You're right.
Yeah.
You're right. You're right.
But some of that is not all, so you understand, like, this is just some of the contributors, like there's other things, if we have one eleven F and people are out injured, we're paying for them, and paying someone to fill this shift, so there's a different, there's different elements in it, we're just trying to make sure we're conservative with it.
Yeah, there's a fine line, you want to make sure that you have enough money for that. Okay, so now we're on code enforcement, building instruction. Um, there's a brand new, well, it's not really brand new, but it's the first time this has been numbered in, it's a thousand dollars, for professional tech general.
So that we brought on, um, what do you call it, CAD, um, software, um, what's it called?
Well, it's CAD, but we're also looking at licensing.
Licensing, licensing software, so we're putting.
To get automated?
Yes.
Really?
We're trying, it's just hard to get everybody on the same page.
Good house.
Trying to get, it's hard to get every department on the same page of what product they want, and it's a whole, who's gonna run it, so it's a whole other. Those guys think that it runs itself, like, Wendy and I, they have to figure out what's wrong. Those guys think that it runs itself, like, I mean, Wendy and I, they'd have to figure out what's wrong.
He's doing it in your office.
We told them, I said, did I, did I have the big job? Oh, it's easy, it doesn't, it never has a problem, okay. That'll be the next thing on Facebook, it'll be like, okay, we got a firm, man, this new system, what is wrong with this town?
Oh, gosh, no, that's a good thing.
We have Code Enforcement Gas and Plumbing Inspection.
Yep.
Code Enforcement Seal and Wakes and Measures on page, on page thirty. Page thirty-one is Code Enforcement Electrical Inspection. Page thirty-two is Public Safety Emergency Management. That hasn't changed. And then we come to our page thirty-three, Public Safety Animal Control. And that's where you're gonna hire another.
Right, right.
Senior questions, go to page thirty-five, Hobby Lobby. Page thirty-six is Public Safety Dispatches.
There's two positions open there that, well, we're trying to fill. We just filled one and then they, I guess, started and didn't work out, so, but we did negotiate the contract, so they're getting a pretty good salary now. I think we'll have a better, I think we should have a better opportunity to attract more people there.
Yeah, that's good, because we noticed that it did go up substantially, so I figured, I think you mentioned it too.
They're making less than, you know, I don't wanna get into it, but it's, it's, you know, so.
It's an important job.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Lot more to it than people realize.
And then on page thirty-seven, Vocational Education, we talked about that a little bit earlier. Department of Public Works, which is on page thirty-eight, and the question we always ask is, is it fully staffed?
Yeah, I think the, uh, the only thing is the Assistant DPW Director's position is open. We might have one of the other ones, but I don't, I think most of the, I think we, we hired, right? I think we might have put an extra one in there that we're looking to fill, if we can fill another, um, operator or labor.
Oh, so one more, so one additional position? Yes?
I think we do.
Forest Street.
We're in Forest Street.
Oh, in Forest Street.
And that was due to, because of retirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we hired other people and they've gone into like more highway for now, so I think it's about, we're trying to sort them all out.
Yeah, we're definitely up in, in headcount.
Yep, trying to add a little bit of time, not, you know what I mean?
So page thirty-nine is Forest Street.
If we could just go back, I, I think I missed it. Um, this was the cemetery, did we come up on that yet?
No.
No.
No, so, oh, okay, I thought it was over there.
It's on its way.
Down the line.
It's on its way, okay.
Um, and then we have on page forty-one, Snow and Ice Salaries, we talked about that a little earlier as well. We have the Motor Pool Division Salaries, page forty-two. Waste Collection and Disposal Salaries, for page forty-three.
I think there's one part-time position in there.
Okay, yeah, I noticed that.
I think it's nineteen hours, no better.
Yeah, the, uh, salary line actually can go on a little bit. And now we're at the Cemetery Division for Salaries, page forty-four.
And we all stuck with that for employees for that, I know that you.
We're not, we have a couple, we have a, well, the cemetery, we have a couple injuries, so long, gotta be in long term. So we, we, we're trying to deal with that issue.
We have a foreman there?
We do, yeah, he's back, but he's like, he was out for a while too, and then the other guy was out as well. It's still out, so I don't know, like, you know.
But the DPW work.
Yeah, yeah, everybody, yeah, we're all pitching in, but because the problem is when you have small departments, like if somebody gets injured, you, your budget is, you're paying them out of the budget and then you're not able to hire somebody else. So because then their job is, you know, you're filling their position, so it's a tough situation when you have small departments. We have the DPW that fills in.
We're still on page forty-four, any other questions in cemetery? Page forty-five is the Parks Division Salaries.
So that was one that we had talked about. We, we increased it like a year ago or whatever, with the investments that were leaving parks and playgrounds.
Yeah.
So.
Is it in there?
Don't know.
What are we talking, salary?
On the parks.
No, no, just an extra person, but I think we have, I think we do have it in the person, I think they double them up on highway for now, because it's the winter.
Yeah, so that would be, yeah, yeah, cuz parks now has, no, they, they're in parks.
Okay, all right.
They got a foreman and two operators.
Okay, all right, good.
They got, they got on the, on the, on the, uh.
Yeah, like a lot of the parks people work at, I think, work on highway, highway during the winter or whatever, or help over at Forest.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we do.
Good to have that flexibility.
Yeah.
Is everybody good?
Yeah, yeah.
All ready. So we're gonna move to page forty-six, which is the Department of Public Works Administration Division Expenses. Page forty-seven is the Forestry Division Expenses. Page forty-eight is the Highway Division Expenses. It's always good to get more money in payment, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And sidewalks and catch basins, all things that people are concerned with. Page forty-nine, Snow and Ice Division Expenses. Page fifty is Street Lighting Division. You're still getting the solar, the forty thousand and the obstruction rule of tax forty thousand?
That is correct.
Are we doing well with the savings that we'll be?
Yeah.
Page fifty-one is Motor Vehicle Maintenance Division Expenses. But that's also page fifty-two as well. Page fifty-three, we talked about this little oil and waste collection and disposal.
Got some increases there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You wanna talk about it anymore, because we talked about it.
It's not a good subject to talk about.
Okay.
Nope.
It's a big number.
Double, yeah, did.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and why we're going through this so fast is a lot of these budgets are balanced, they're the same from last year, so the public knows.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Deborah.
Sorry, Selena, Selena Serena.
I know.
Very informal this, this evening. Page fifty-four, Cemetery Division Expenses. Page fifty-five is the Parks Division Expenses. Do we have working cameras at all the parks?
Not all, but the ones we.
The ones we just run.
Yeah, and we have them on the street, uh, like Saga Center, Clifton Dale, Winter Street Cemetery, uh, they're, they're all over town. Central Street, we have them.
They're in there.
We have them on Eastern Ave. Yeah, Red Bull.
Page fifty-six, Department of Public Works Capital. Page fifty-seven, Engineering Department.
How many we shot there?
Uh, we added a, a position on here, so I think we have one. So we have two engineers, one of them is filled, we're gonna, they're gonna put another one on. And I have a GIS manager that we have in there, so that's like more of a computer person, we've been trying to get somebody for that.
Okay.
Um, that would, and that would help with, I think, the whole GIS system for the whole town, which all links into actually a, a online permitting system.
Yep.
And then we have the, the, trying to bring a, a administrative staff in that would help there and, and down at the planning department. That's new. The big goal really is to try to build up the engineering, um, support engineering and planning department with the, for the planning board and, you know, like, cuz we have all these projects, it's just a lot for one engineer to do.
So you said you're trying to hire another engineer, have you had any interviews?
Yeah, I think so.
Good process.
Maybe, hopefully, yeah, that's the plan. It's, it's easier when you have a couple, you know, people here, because then people go, oh, you know what I mean? They don't want a job with one person.
Right, I feel like everything's gonna fall on them.
Well, even administrative staff, you don't realize how much, you know, it, it takes someone to make copies or to deal with stuff, you know?
Just call, call them over to. What am I gonna say? So, uh, page fifty-eight is Facilities Maintenance and Ramps. Just page fifty-eight. Page fifty-nine. We're updating the HVAC Service.
Uh, which one?
And the. And Facilities Maintenance and Ramps.
Which was it?
Heating and HVAC Services.
Oh, just increased a little bit?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, just because probably, I'm, I'm guessing the warranties, is that right?
Yep.
Warranties are expensive, so we have a lot of warranties on the newer stuff and like, especially with the middle high school. And, uh, that, we have a TECO Gen system that is, we have the warranty system, we have, I mean, things always get some kind of a problem, but we're under warranty. They, that TECO Gen system is like, they actually have like car engines that are in there and then they turn on and it supposedly, you know, helps you save energy and it's like a whole system, but it's, there's a lot of issues with it all the time. But they fix it and we, we pay big money for warranty and they have to come out, you know, like a maintenance program. So they come out like every, every month or something to check or every couple of months. We've had a couple, I think a couple of the engines been replaced, I think there's three of them.
Wow.
But they're like car engines, you know, it's interesting how it works.
So that was on page fifty-nine, then we have page sixty and sixty-one. Facilities Maintenance and Ramps. The Health Department, we have page sixty-two. Any questions on that? And it's page sixty-three ago. We're at Council Aging, page sixty-four. Veteran Services is page sixty-five.
These departments are all fully staffed. Health Department, Council on Aging.
Yeah, Health, I think we have, uh, we have somebody that's covering it now and, you know.
Based on, yeah, it looks like they're staffed.
Page sixty-six is the Library. Sixty-seven is Youth and Recreation. And then we have Locksman's Land is at page sixty-eight. We have a whole two thousand dollars in celebrations on page sixty-nine.
That's a.
That's actually not celebrated, so it's, we call it celebrations.
I don't know why.
It's actually for the markers, the veterans markers.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Everybody says that.
It actually says it on the line item, it's interesting.
What's that? But everybody thinks it's for celebration.
You see celebration.
More in town.
Open bar.
Next, we're on page seventy, and that's Debt Services. We have principal interest and interest on, uh, long-term debt. Any questions on that? And then we have the Long Term Debt Services by Fund on the next page with all the detail and following page.
Hey, the high school fence is almost paid off, right when it's falling down.
Oh, no.
I saw some sections need, uh, some TLC.
They need to be replaced.
Yeah.
And then we have, uh, on, look at those, page, the page before, page seventy-one, so page seventy, it's the one. Those are the totals. See, no questions for the number one? Page seventy-one, thirty benefits, we talked about this a little earlier. And then we have, uh, page seventy-two, which is Other Insurance. Wendy, what is other classified items miscellaneous deductible?
So various claims that are processed, we didn't have anything budgeted for deductible payments. So we might have a ten thousand deduct, ten thousand dollar deductible on a claim and we've just been charging it to one of the liability line items or a property. So that's really needs to be reserved for premium, so we thought we would add a new line item just for deductibles. So as a claim is going through its process and they bill us that part of the deductible, we would pay it from there.
Thank you. And then on page seventy-three, which is Transfers and Other Financing Sources. Now we're gonna move on to the Store Enterprise Fund. There are no page numbers on here, they're just in the dot mark. Does anybody have any questions on the Store Enterprise Fund? I appreciate all this detail, it's quite a bit of detail.
I don't know what happened, it used to be brown color, right, and the other one was blue?
No.
What happened?
We never was.
It used to be brown, the other one was, the water was blue.
Mr. Manajer.
What, then the water was blue? Something's happening.
So next.
Brown?
Okay, and now we're at the Water Enterprise Fund, if anyone has any questions?
Scott, on the, uh, overhead allocations, they're over, um, the three rooms will do their, do their normal allocation.
Yep.
Showing the percent.
Yeah, and then we'll set up a meeting, it's always that like squeeze in for one, like that week, trying to.
Yeah, usually call me the morning.
Be on high alert.
Can you come in?
Well, it's like, cuz we're depending on like other things and ramping, it's like a nightmare, you know what I mean? That is, a lot of it is the most pressure of the whole thing, is trying to get the, the sewer and water done and make sure that the finance committee takes it up, you guys take it up, and then we're able to get the town meeting to, you know, to get the whole budget there. It's a, it's a nightmare.
It's an election, yeah, zero percent.
Yeah.
So do board members have any additional questions to the town manager or our treasurer tonight? I've seen nine with somebody like, I think we're gonna, as we've done in the past, we're gonna go in with the town manager's recommendation to the finance committee, you write a letter and send it to them. If somebody does need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, yeah, that we, uh, move the budget, uh, the preliminary budget, operating budget for the town of SAG is just for the year twenty twenty-six with all amounts listed as the town manager recommendation amounts, uh, to the finance committee as presented and the total, uh, estimated expenditure budget of a hundred nineteen million, one hundred fifty thousand, oh, thirty-one for the general fund, fifteen million, three twenty-eight, one oh two for the water and sewer enterprise funds with a total fiscal year estimated expenditure of a hundred thirty-four million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars.
Second by the chair, is there further discussion? Saying, do you want a roll call or a regular?
No, it's fine, regular.
All those in favor of Selective and Use Motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries point to zero.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you Wendy.
Thank you, Meredith.
Do you want Meredith to write the letter and send it or would you?
I think we have one, right?
Yeah, we do have one.
I think we have, we can figure it out.
Okay, very good, so if you need anything from either me or Meredith, please let me know.
So.
And as.
Thank you very much.
Our board member said, um, thank you very much, um, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you.
And Wendy, with all your hard work and diligence, I know how hard you just put together.
It's the start of it, it's the start.
It's a, it's a new target, we, we all understand.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's a long process, I mean, it's been, I mean, we've been doing this a lot of years now, but.
But all of us have been part of this for a very long time. I was thinking about it as, on my way over, and Mike and you have been doing this for sixteen years, since your sixteen budget that you voted on.
I mean, it's good in some way, but there's a lot of positive stuff, yeah.
Huh?
Yeah.
Jeff, what do you love? You're twelve years, long drive.
But the thing now, I mean, in all honesty, is I, I think people don't realize that there's lots of show for this. Like, we've been doing a steady, anything and we've been really thinking, there's a lot that, that the community thinks really improved a lot. And there's different things, there's more hurdles and there's more stuff and I think, you know, you take the politics and the personality out of it. I think we're all Sargonians and we all want things to, you know, be better.
It's generally open, long public process, if anybody wants to see what's going on.
Well, even before, like people would get a notion, like, oh, when I first started, like, oh, we don't even have a, like, detailed budget. I mean, you go to other communities, I've looked, watched other finance communities, I think they're not even close to what we have for line items, not even in the same realm. They have like one, they have one number for three different categories and that's all they're, they have a seat.
And full disclosure, you know, when I have other questions, I can get my questions answered offline before we get to this point. I ask questions of Wendy and, and Scott and I ask for backup for certain things and if it's my questions, I, I'm good with it. I don't have to, you know.
Well, we're a good tracker, I guess, too, I think we're sta- stable and, and, you know, and, and honestly, you know, with the support of the board and, and finance committee and town meeting, it really makes a difference when everybody's trying to roll in the same direction. There's always gonna be all that stuff that goes on, and if we can keep doing what we're doing, we get a lot of things that we can continue to do that are, just make the town a better place. Stuff is perfect, but, you know.
I, I think, I think the whole budget process is very transparent, we have SCTV here and I wanna thank you for. I, I think, I think the whole budget process is very transparent, we have SCTV here and I wanna thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
Is this recorded?
We, we're about to press record. Can we start all of us? Scott, start reading that letter.
No.
And you said you were gonna put this up on the website?
Yeah, w- once she updates the thing with the Selectment Regulation, we'll get it up probably tomorrow, late day or something, so, which we always do.
That's great.
Did you see the meeting was being recorded tonight?
Oh, yes, I did say it was being recorded, but I just said at the beginning, this meeting was recorded, so.
So will.
All right, second by the chair, all those in favor?
Good night, bye, everybody.
By saying aye.
Bye.